You're in thinner.
I'd like to invite up Mr. Daniel Yocabonas. Is that your son that's with you?
Yes.
We'll bring him up to you. We're here tonight because Mr. Daniel Yocabonas, resident of Muskegon, assisted our police department here in the last month. And I'm going to read this certificate of appreciation to the commission, the mayor, and to the citizens to see what Mr. Yocabonas did for us. This is a Muskegon Police Department Certificate of Appreciation. This certifies, this certificate is gratefully awarded to Mr. Daniel Yocabonas. Our fellow citizen, in recognition of his selfless service to his community on March 30th, 2012, Mr. Yocabonas helped Muskegon Police by reporting the location of an armed robbery suspect who had just robbed a local store and fled the scene in a vehicle. Mr. Yocabonas followed the suspect, immediately pointed him out to responding officers who had arrived in the area. After a short chase, the suspect was safely captured by our police department. And Mr. Yocabonas' actions not only led to the suspect's capture, but also helped protect officers and citizens from further danger. And for that, I thank him. But just to add a little bit to that, this individual they had arrested had been involved in some other robberies in our community. We have been working for about a month to two months trying to locate this individual. Mr. Yocabonas was just out, running his errands, doing what he was doing, and happened to notice this individual, helped the store clerk, and I read the rest of it. And for that, it's really nice to see a citizen help out, but yet not overact, not under, but just do the right thing to help us take a dangerous person off the streets. Daniel, thank you.
And on behalf of all the citizens, Mr. Yocabonas, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Next item is People's Choice Award for Best Beach. Mr. Alexander.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm Dave Alexander. I'm proud to say 3410 Whiskey Hollow, City of Muskegon. Here tonight representing MLive.com, my employer, and the Muskegon Rotary Club, which I am a board member of. And we had a promotion to celebrate the community here recently, the People's Choice Awards. And there were 1,300 voters in our MLive user group that voted in 20 categories, one of which was for Best Public Beach. And I'd like to ask Mayor Wilmington to join me for a second. Of those nominees for Best Public Beach, there was Hopmaster State Park, Duck Lake State Park, and Pierre Marquette Beach. And obviously, the MLive folks found that we have a gem here in the city. And I want to congratulate not only you and the commission, but obviously the staff that takes care of that fine piece of property for all of us, not here, just in the city, but for the entire community. Congratulations. And I'd just like to mention also that amongst the 20 categories, we also had one for Top Community Leader, in which Mayor Wilmington was one of three nominees along with Nancy Crandall and Louis Churchwell. And that award was won by former Mayor Crandall. I'm sorry, the mayor. It was close. The balloting was close, sir. Thank you much.
Too many of my elections have gone lately. I think it's close. But those are there.
Thank you.
Well, I'll speak for the citizens and for MLive and the Rotary Club of Muskegon. We want to thank you and the voters for the honor. We certainly are aware of the gem, but certainly Duck Lake State Park and Hopmaster Park along with many of our other waterfronts in Muskegon County are beautiful places to be. I want to acknowledge our staff, Mohammed, on behalf of the Department of Public Works, for the work that they do to maintain that park. And we're in the process right now of finishing it up, so we have a great summer season down there. Kathy Bubaker-Clark and her department for making sure that everything runs smoothly on all the rentals that are down there. And Chief Lewis for making sure that it remains to be a safe and fun park for all of us that take the time to go down there and enjoy it. So, once again, Dave, thank you on behalf of the citizens. May we have the consent agenda read, please? Oops. Oh, I'm sorry. Con Nolan. From Great Lakes Diecast. Welcome back, Con.
Nice to be here, Mayor. I'm Con Nolan, president of Great Lakes Diecast. And I'm here just to say two words, and that's thank you. And on behalf of everybody at our company and all the people that are what we call stakeholders, suppliers, and customers and what have you, we want to thank the city, the city commissioners, Brian Muzay, Kathy Bubaker-Clark, for supporting us. Three years ago, Brian and I bumped into each other, and he said, "How are things going?" And I said, "They're pretty tough." Our employment was down to 50 people, and we were struggling. And we were fighting to get business and stay alive. And the recession was in full boom. And our full boom, I should say. We had gone from 185 down to 50 people. Brian said, "Maybe I can help you." He did. You did. You voted for a loan, a $30,000 loan, which helped us take on some business from HNI Corporation in Muscatine, Iowa, business which previously was sourced in China. And there was an old beat-up set of tools sitting in Wisconsin. And with the money that you loaned us, we had the tools rebuilt and started into production. We're still producing that stuff today. And it provided jobs for about 12 to 14 people. It still does. That, and truthfully, some other help. Bonnie Hammersley and the folks at the county were outstanding. They gave us a loan, which we're in the process of paying off, to get some more tooling. That brought more jobs in. And today, we're alive, we're afloat, and we have 123 people employed. And it's been a long battle, but it's been a classic example that a lot of people here in Muskegon truly do give a damn. We really do. And I'm humbled by our folks, by your support, by county support. And it shows what can happen if people really try and really use the four-letter word, "work." And I say thank you very much from everybody at our place. We couldn't be more appreciative.
Thank you, Con, very much. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk. Summary request: To approve minutes of the April 24 City Commission meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Special event request: Muskegon Bike Time Events Incorporated. Planning and economic development. Summary request: Muskegon Bike Time Events Incorporated has filed a special event application for the annual Bike Time Festival in downtown Muskegon to be held July 19, 2021, and 22, 2012. Portions of their requests require City Commission approval, including some items that are new for 2012 and some that are the same as in past years. Staff recommendation: It is recommended that staff be allowed to make the final decision regarding rental fees and actual costs to be coordinated through the city manager. In addition, staff recommends if Bike Time picks up items such as picnic tables, bleachers, and trash cans for distribution at proper locations, there will be no equipment rental charge to Bike Time. This must first be approved by and coordinated through city staff. It is also recommended that city staff review staffing levels for city personnel with the Bike Time staff, with the city making the final decision on the number of city staff needed for the event. These recommendations follow what was done for the previous Bike Time events. Regarding street closures, staff recommends approval with the condition that Bike Time notify affected downtown businesses of the dates and times of street closures and the date and time that no parking restrictions go into effect on those streets. 2012 Payment Marking Program, Public Works. Summary request: Staff is requesting permission to enter to a one-year contractual agreement with Michigan Pavement Marking of Wyoming, Michigan for centerline painting and specialty markings. This contract is bid out by the Muskegon County Road Commission for local agencies in the Muskegon County Pavement Marking Group, with each member billed separately by MPM for painting services requested. Staff recommendation: Approve the request. Senior Nutrition Program Agreement between Age Well Services of West Michigan and the City of Muskegon. Planning and economic development. Summary request: The City of Muskegon has contracted with Age Well Services for several years to conduct the Senior Nutrition Program at the McGrath Park Community Building. This agreement will extend those services through September 30th, 2013. Staff recommendation: To approve the agreement and authorize the mayor's signature. Disc Golf at McGrath Park, Public Works. Summary request: Consider a request from a group of volunteers called the Thursday Night League at MPDGC to install 18 concrete tee pads to enhance and protect the disc golf course at McGrath Park. The group's request is as follows. The city not object to the group raising the necessary funds via solicitation of private donation. City provides some assistance in equipment and available materials such as sand. The city acts as a fiduciary of the collected funds and issue payments to outside contractors, suppliers using said funds. The group feels that such steps will enable the private donors to claim some type of tax deduction, thus encouraging donation. Staff recommendation: Approve the request because the proposed work will enhance the park and allow city staff to have the final decision on where and how the proposed pads will be. Solid Waste Contract Extension until end 2022, Public Works. Summary request: Extend the refuse collection contract with Republic/Allied Waste until December 31st, 2022, with modifications to the current contract as outlined in the proposal from Allied Waste dated May 1st, 2012. The proposal was arrived after negotiations between city staff and Allied Waste per your authorization back in March 13th, 2012. Staff recommendation: Authorize staff to issue a contract extension based upon the proposal. Removal of Citizens District Council Member and Appointment to Housing Commission, City Clerk. Summary request: To remove Stephanie Marion from the Citizens District Council and concur with the city manager's recommendation to appoint Katrina Hanson to the Housing Commission. Staff recommendation: Approval. Committee recommendation: The Community Relations Committee recommended approval at their May 7th meeting.
Thank you, Commissioners. You have heard the consent agenda read. Are there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Vice Mayor Gowron?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner Spataro. Mr. German. Your voice is sounding the same to me when I'm not looking. Sorry about that. To approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any of the folks here from the Disc Golf? You guys from Disc Golf? Are you? Thanks very much. Great idea. New business. Item A, please.
Proposed 2012-2013 CDBG Home Grants Budget, Community and Neighborhood Services. Summary request: To approve the 2012-2013 CDBG Home Grant Budget based on the spreadsheet to force submission of the 2012-2013 Action Plan to HUD. Staff recommendation: Approval.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Gowron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the proposed 2012-2013 CDBG Home Grants Budget for submission for the action plan to HUD.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Gowron, supported by Commissioner Spataro, to approve the proposed 2012-2013 CDBG Home Grants Budget. I see this, Virginia Taylor wanted to speak on this, so please step forward and give your name and address, please.
My name's Virginia Taylor, and I live at 187 Hamilton. And I want to thank the commission first for awarding Community and Compass home dollars in the amount of $40,500. However, the award is a large reduction from previous year's awards. And I just wanted to make the commission aware that as a choo-dah and a community development organization, Community and Compass is able to leverage the home dollars and bring additional state and public dollars to the city and to the neighborhoods with these funds. They're very, very important funds to us in this area. And this decrease can affect the amount of money that we're able to bring back into our community in leveraged funds. In addition, I know that the funds were cut some this year, but we've also had a cut in, we're the only choo-dah that applied this year. In the past, Habitat for Humanity has also applied, and they did not apply this year. And so, we were hoping that the additional funds would help us to do some down payment assistance also with some home funds, and then we could bring in some additional match dollars for that to increase some of the homeownership. In addition, it would increase the affordable housing in the neighborhood. Right now, in our office, we had a three-bedroom home that was available for rent. I put it on Craigslist, and in three days, I had 70 families call, all eligible, below 80% AMI, that were seeking housing, that need housing, affordable housing. So, affordable rental housing is in a crisis in our community. I get calls every day. And so, we are hoping with the home loans to be able to increase the amount of three bedrooms and affordable housing that is offered. In addition, reclaiming a blighted property or two and making it another useful property. And so, I just wanted to let you know how this cut is going to affect our community and what asset maybe you would reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For anyone else that would care to address this item? Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gowron?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other business to bring forward tonight? Commissioner Spataro?
Just one item. I mentioned it yesterday, but now that the cameras are on, I'll mention it again. Just kudos to the seniors at Muskegon High School for being a national winner, one of 10 named for the musical competition, the cheer competition. So, hopefully, we can get a proper recognition out to them for that accomplishment. It's quite a kudo. I mean, you're competing against thousands of high schools nationwide, and to, that's pretty impressive. Those kids work really hard, and they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Need for you to give your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Jessie Evans. I'm speaking on behalf of Trinity Village Apartments, Number One. It is on 2250 Valley Street. Our office address is Apartment 9 in Muskegon, 49444. And, basically, what it is, is we're asking for an adjustment on a water bill. It's past the point where the water, or the deadline where the water department is able to do it. We had a very large bill, and being that we are a nonprofit community, and I'm the management company that works for the owner, we are unable to adequately pay that bill on time, which has caused us several penalties in payments because of reoccurring late fees for that, as well as just us not being able to cover that amount due to the neglect of a resident who had a water leak and didn't tell us, where it forced us to do a full building inspection. And upon inspection, we were unable to enter the resident's unit. And we had to send a violation to the resident in order to get a response. So, it ended up taking us longer than the time allotted for us to be able to get the adjustment request out.
I just wanted to follow up on that. She had, Trinity Village had a leak back in November and December, resulting to a $3,500 water bill. In order for us to grant a leak adjustment, they had to request it within 30 days of the billing period. She did not do that in a timely fashion, so I cannot do it without, it's beyond me. So, I told her, the only thing she could do was come to the commission and ask for either, either you could grant her, you know, meter authority to give her a leak adjustment, or she's up for shut-off notice, she's up for shut-off next week, too. So, either grant a payment plan, either or, it's up to the commission. I just wanted her to bring that before you guys, because I cannot do neither one without your permission.
What is the amount at now, Ken?
The amount up for shut-off is $3,156.23.
And normally...
But there's additional, but that's the amount for shut-off, but there's an additional amount as well?
Yeah, they, they only, they've been paying on it, they only, they have a balance of Since that time, they had the leak adjustment, the penalty that has came about is $4,1985. So, I could do a leak adjustment with the penalty, I could do a leak adjustment without the penalty, or you could do a payment plan or do nothing. It's up to the commission. I just wanted her to bring that to you guys and that you guys decide.
Because we are asking if we could have some sort of an adjustment, and the possibility of the penalties, like I said, we are a nonprofit community owned by the Bishop but managed by another company, Bishop Wells. And it's hard for us to be able to make that, and unfortunately, they don't offer payment plans either without approval from the commission. Because typically, our water bill for those buildings, which I went through the past, go anywhere from $250 to $320. So, to go from that to a $3,500 bill because of one resident who refused to tell us what the issue was for a, an issue that literally cost us about $20 to fix and 20 minutes of my maintenance man's time. But because we were unable to enter the unit, it really did put us in a bind where now we're unable to pay other bills because we're having to plan for this one affecting our residents and otherwise. But since then, we have paid the amount for the current bill owed. It's just been the past few that we've been hoping to go on that. So, we haven't just not been paying, hoping that it would resolve itself.
It shows that we sent out, we did a meter check back in December because of the usage. And it was very high, of course, but it's up to the landlord to figure out what the leak is, you know, so, and give us something in a timely fashion, so it's...
That was our first course of action, because obviously, before entering everyone's home and causing some sort of a stir, we wanted to make sure that the meters were working correctly. So, that was why we requested that someone come and read them to make sure that they were accurate. Once we were able to do that, we had to give notice to the residents to let them know we were entering their apartment. And then, because this resident did not have a master key and did not provide us with keys to the lock that they had changed, we could not enter until we got a hold of them, which took, like I said, a written violation, which took about three, four days after all of the original process to get us into her unit to fix it.
If this had all happened within 30 days, Ken, what would the adjustment have been?
The adjustment, I didn't do that, but the adjustment probably would have been, just based on my experience, probably around $300 to $400. Because they still have to pay for the water and as soon as it goes, and we just give them the difference of the 25% overage. So, it's not as big as a leak. When people apply for leak adjustment, they think they're just going to get all of it, it's only 25% of what they go over their average. So, the city gives them a break, but they still have to pay the majority of the lion's share of the leak.
That's why we were also asking if we could get the penalties removed and then to possibly set up, or have the permission to set up a payment plan for the remaining amount, being that it's so large, without additional penalty fees being added during the time of our payment plan.
And you've been able to do anything with your leases that would allow you to get quicker access to it if this were to happen in the future?
We have sent out notices since then requesting that all our residents make sure that, that if they have a key, because we all have master, we have master keys for all of our units. So, in that case, especially if there was an emergency, we could enter a resident's home. But in some times, a resident will change those locks without us knowing, in which we require that they give us an extra key for the unit. But we have sent out notices requesting that all residents make us aware if they have done something of that nature. Unfortunately, it's kind of hard for us to tell with 96 units on three different properties.
Well, there are some rental properties that I'm aware of, that complexes that have, I don't know if it's part of their lease, because I've never leased there, but I know that if they give a 24-hour notice to the resident, that they have to let them come in to do an inspection.
And we did, we did so. We did so. The problem was is that because we didn't have the key to enter her unit, we were unable, until we were to get a hold of her. I called her phone several times. Unfortunately, it was a number, most of it was prepaid phone, which happens a lot for our residents. If they're unable to afford the minutes, there's no way for us to contact us. So, we put a notice on her door specifically. We noticed that it had not been moved that day, so I had to mail her a, which I brought a copy of as well, a letter basically stating that if she wasn't going to let us in, we were going to give her a leak violation, in which she could be asked to, or we could start the eviction process if she was not going to comply.
Commissioner Spataro?
Well, normally, I'm not very supportive of these kind of things, because you're professional business. This is something that you should be aware of. There's a 30-day notice. You get that bill. I would have hoped that you, you know, you called the treasurer's office within those 30 days to say, "Hey, something's out of whack here. What do we do?" But it's a little hard for me to say that 90, potentially 90-some people should lose their water because of one tenant and perhaps less than quick response here. So, I think we should allow for the, I'll make a motion that we allow for the leak adjustment and allow staff to negotiate a payment plan for the repayment of the remaining water.
Second.
How long of a time period? That's for you to determine. You will negotiate that. I will make sense.
Nothing on late payments? Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to allow staff to negotiate a payment deal and to give the, what would be considered to be a normal leak adjustment without, leak adjustment. Any discussion? Commissioner Hood?
That's the leak adjustment with the late...
That's a, the leak adjustment with the late payments, no? Does not include...
The normal, the normal leak adjustment, that would normally have been given if they replied in a timely way. The payment plan is to be negotiated with staff, I believe, how that payment plan is negotiated between staff and the customer.
I guess I'm not understanding, are the late payments to stay?
The penalty fees.
Okay, the penalty fees are to stay. Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galen?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Mills? Mr. Mills?
Name's Dan Mills, 1817 Mills Avenue, 494 Part 5. And thanks for letting me speak. Tonight again, I'm torn between two issues and it's so difficult to try to talk about both of them in just three minutes. I could try, you know, one of the things that's on my mind is the Freedom of Information request that I made while I've been asking for documents since January relating to the SAPI property. You know, and I've requested to get my taxes back too. I've been paying city taxes even though I moved away eight years ago, you know, and so when I couldn't even get a copy machine photocopy of, like I say, you know, the bond amount for blowing up that smokestack without a $750 estimated payment, you know, for Freedom of Information documents, I thought, nuts, give me my taxes back. And so, hell, I don't know if I'll ever get those back either. I made a check for 150 bucks and then, you know, you got like from last year, probably, I don't know, $400 there. And I still don't have any information. And, you know, I was looking at a videotape last night that we took, Mr. Spataro saying way back in January, I think it was, this city's got no documents, you know? And he just came out and said, yeah, we don't have anything. And I didn't think he did, you know? And so I don't know what all this thing is, you haven't started your search yet, you know? That's what it says on my most recent Freedom of Information response, you haven't started your search yet for these documents. But I'd like to pay more if it costs it and then I'd like to photograph and videotape you guys searching, I'd like to watch you work and find those documents. Yeah, I'd like to see, that could be pretty interesting. Definitely worth $750. Wonder where you'd find them. Yeah, but the other thing I really always feel, you know, I need to talk about, and that is this, you know, something, when I go away on a vacation and I come back after maybe several weeks, I notice things I don't normally notice. I'll notice that I need a little paint job on the foundation or something, you know, but when I'm living there, I'm blind to it. And I think that's maybe what's going on here. When I come in after being away for a long time and I hear the prayer, as a first order of business here, I think, how bizarre! But I'm sure that for you, this is just a normal matter of business. Now, please, I'm not making jokes about your personal religious beliefs. I, I think those are very important, we all have them. I'm just really sensitive to my friends who have religious beliefs that are different. And to have to come into the city hall to deal business and then have to face Christianity first, that's very intimidating. And I've asked you, as a matter of dignity and respect for the citizens in this community, to please consider changing that, and I know it's an entrenched, long-held traditional ritual, but that doesn't mean it's right. I'd like to have you think about that and maybe consider changing your first order of business. And I hope that with the city council members, everything doesn't have to end up in a court case. Because it seems like that's what it is. I asked for information, I got a legal document I gotta fill out, and that means attorneys in court. You know, if, it means we gotta start issuing, you know, get attorneys talking about constitutional law and stuff like that, man, I guess that's what it comes down to. But please, let's just talk about it and let's think about changing that. Thank you.
Reverend Freeman?
My name is Reverend Bill Freeman, I'm the minister at Harbor Unitarian Universalist Congregation at 1296 Montgomery here in Muskegon. And I'm here tonight for a couple of reasons. One is to say that a week ago, my wife and I moved to Muskegon. We are at 3121 Beach Street. We moved here from Holland. And about two years ago, almost exactly, I went before the Holland City Council to ask them to pass essentially a gay rights ordinance to add sexual orientation and gender identity to the already existing anti-discrimination ordinances in Holland. And I don't know if it was coincidence or providence, but the night my wife and I made a offer on the house we have now, you all unanimously approved that concept and I believe sent it to the city manager for, to work out the details to, to add sexual orientation and gender identity to the already existing ordinances here in the city of Muskegon. And I want to thank you all for that. Also, since you do begin the meetings with prayer, I would like to offer myself up as someone who could pray at the beginning of a meeting. I have to fill out a form or something probably to do that, but I just wanted to do that. And also...
Your predecessor opened our meetings many times.
She's here in the office. Cool. And also, just, I would like to offer any services or anything I can do for the city of Muskegon. I don't know what that is, I don't really have any skills, I'm just a minister, but anyway. It's, it's good to be here in the city of Muskegon, that's all I want to say.
The clerk reminds me to ask you to fill out a talent bank application, so we're always looking for people willing to help the community by serving on one of our boards or committees. So that's one way you or any other resident of the city could contribute in, in whatever way they're comfortable by serving on one of those boards. And a simple form that is available online to fill out to be considered for one of those positions, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. So anyone else who'd care to address the commission? Need your name and address?
Hi, Jen Osborne, 3125 Tool Street Northwest, Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I'm here on behalf of CJ's on the Beach. You know, I came a couple months ago and requested time. We understand that we have a deficit with the city and we are working to try and get that straightened out. We do not have the full amount and would like the commission to please consider a payment plan. I have spoken with Ken and he said that it would have to be approved by the commission. He spoke to Mr. Mazad and was kind of giving the impression that he would not recommend that we be given an opportunity to have a payment plan. Just wanted to say, you know, on our behalf, we are a family, own and operated business. We are working hard to make a difference here in Muskegon. I know a lot of people like to come out to CJ's, you know, when they're down at the beach, it's, it's kind of a part of, you know, and it was neat to, to see the, the award for the beach presented tonight. It is a fabulous place, we love being there. But we are kind of out of funds at the moment and it, it is difficult to run a seasonal business, but we have always paid our debts to the city. We have fallen behind, we do not always, you know, maybe in the winter, we struggle to be timely with our payments because we have no revenue coming in. But, you know, we, we take our debts very seriously and we do intend to pay them, but without a renewal of our liquor license, we don't have a revenue to repay the city. And it's, it's a very serious issue for us right now. So we are asking that you would consider working with us to set up a payment plan so that we can get this debt out of the way.
CJ's on the Beach currently has a debt between $15,000 and $16,000 owed to the city. That's just for back taxes and rental that they owe the city is approximately $1,000 a month that they have to pay to rent the beach property. I think they're about four months behind on that, that's including that $15,000, $16,000. I told her that it's not up to me, and I know that the deadline has passed, I mean, that the liquor has been, that they have some April 30th deadline, that they have to have something in place to get their liquor license. And I know that we recommended that, we did, they do not get their liquor license until the debt is paid. I kind of, I kind of support that because with the $16,000, my calculations, they almost have to calculate that plus another $2,000 a month to keep up with the current stuff. So it's, it's not only this year we're talking about, current year, that they're going to get behind too. So I don't know. I really, I stand firm where we're at until, but it's up to you guys often to make the decision. It's a tough decision, but that's where we stand. It's about $16,000 currently and it's, and it's going to grow with the summer and the next winter taxes too, so it's just, plus the monthly rent that they owe. So it's just, it's a tough call, I know no one wants to put anybody out of the business, but the city needs to collect the money it's owed to us too.
Mr. Mazad?
And maybe just a couple things that hopefully will help the commission with respect to this situation. As Ken said, there's really two components of this debt. One is the taxes that are owed on, on this property. As you know, that any monies due the city, taxes included, are required to be paid before you make a recommendation to the Liquor Control Commission for renewal of liquor license. The other component is rent. And the reason why CJ's on the Beach pays the city rent is because they have a ground lease with the city of Muskegon for the property for which they're on. City does not only structure, but we own the property or the ground. And so I have a ground lease and Ken mentioned it's about $1,000 a month that is owed to the city for the rent. And a culmination of those two come up to $15,000, $16,000. At least in the last two years, CJ's on the Beach had, have been one of the businesses that has owed the city of Muskegon at the time of the liquor renewal licenses. This year, I think Ms. Osborne appeared before the city commission, as I believe she did last year, and indicated, acknowledged that she owed the city money and was working on repaying that. Our concern, my concern, is that with that amount owed and she had indicated, at least in an email to me, that she would like to pay that off from now until August, that we'll be back in the same situation. I mean, that's a pretty big amount of money to pay us and at the same time, pay the other amounts that are owed. Ken mentioned $1,000 a month that would be owed, but taxes will be due again in July as well and then again in December. So, you know, the situation continues to get worse and not better. Money was owed last year, money's owed again this year, and the amount this year is significantly more.
I think that, Vice Mayor, would you mind taking this part over? Because I think maybe I should probably be excused from this, seeing that I have a liquor license, I'm somewhere in the same neighborhood and just to take anything out of it, I would have...
Mr. Spataro, you have a question?
Not really a question, I mean, the manager, I think, summed up my concerns. Some of you have business experience. When you reach a point where the numbers don't lie, I gotta ask myself, and no offense, is this a viable, ongoing business? Is it possible for this business to generate enough revenue, given the hole they're in financially now, to make that good and be in the black at least as far as what they owe the city by the end of their, their season? And I think the, the history of this property shows that that's probably not likely even in good years. And I'm not sure that this is, quite honestly, this may be a situation where we have to be the ones to say, you need, you need to stop throwing good money after bad. I mean, that's a significant debt to be on.
This debt hasn't occurred over two years or longer period in time? They've been in arrears since they, they came to that location, which is what, three, four years you've been there now? Or is it longer than that?
Correct. CJ's on the Beach was, we purchased in 2009.
And has there been money owed each year, after end of each season?
They, they have to come current each year, that's a requirement of the city. So each year, they would have come current. They, at least last year, Ken spoke to the year before, they owed money at the time of the liquor, the liquor license renewal. But then they, then they come current and then now they owe this amount of money.
The liquor license renewal always comes at a point where we have been operating without revenue for six, seven months. So we are at the bottom of our income and we, it, you know, in the spring, it is a struggle. The, the reason for the, the deficit being higher than it normally would be this year was, last year, we got monies to pay the, the deficit that we had. And instead of paying the taxes and the back land lease, the land lease was, the back land lease was paid and then paid ahead. And it was miscommunicated, we were not aware that the winter taxes for 2010, which is a good chunk of this, were not paid at that time. And when we paid our summer taxes last year, there was no mention made, we have not, we're having issues receiving mail out there too, and that's totally separate. But we were not aware that those were not paid until this spring, when we tried to become current. We, we thought we were walking in being, you know, hey, we've got some money in the bank, we are ready to walk in and get current with the city and go. And we're rather shocked with this large deficit that we're facing right now.
I think part of this debt is, is the 2010 and 11, it's a little bit of both, so I don't...
As I said, we paid our summer taxes last year, unaware that the winter taxes from 2010 had not been paid.
In the previous years, the commission has gave them additional time to pay some of the debt past the deadlines. So, I mean, it's just, I think it's the second or third year that we have extended the time to pay their debt beyond a liquor license. So this is an ongoing process every year. She comes to the commission and asks for additional time, I think we granted it last year. So, but it's growing, you know, that's my concern, it's growing. And like you said, being a seasonal business, they're going to have to generate a lot just to pay what they owe the city. I don't know, what about, you know, the state and other, billing people that, you know, gas, electricity, all that stuff, they're going to generate a significant enough income to stay afloat and be in the black. So that's my main concern. They're already in a huge hole. Then they have to get out of that hole and stay current, I don't, but that's my main concern for the city.
Any questions, commissioners? Is there any consideration for consideration in this issue or...
Maybe I could add some more information, I don't know if it helps in your deliberation, but, you know, the city commission, when they made a recommendation to the Liquor Control Commission on licenses that should not be renewed, Ms. Osborne's license was one of them. We, as I understand, she made an appeal to the Liquor Control Commission and had a hearing last Monday, I don't know the outcome of, of that hearing, but we did provide this information to the Liquor Control Commission for their consideration in their deliberations. So there was a hearing, how, I don't know if they made a determination as of yet, Liquor Control Commission can... Liquor Control Commission can approve the license over your objections.
Commissioner?
To understand correctly, from the bill that was owed last year, and what was, was a majority of that paid or was it just the, and was the new amount that was owed, the current amount, that was tacked on?
What I could do, I didn't know she was coming tonight. I have all the information in my office. I could grab it if you don't mind waiting. I'd be one.
Well, the, last year, the 2010 winter tax bill was not paid. And we, due to our own, I mean, that was our fault. It was a miscommunication that we did not pay that. But that was almost $5,000. And now, because it was not paid for the length of time that it is, there is quite significant late penalties on that. So, that is a good, I mean, that's almost half of what we owe was the back tax. And that's what we need to catch up.
Mr. Spataro?
Thank you. Well, my opinion hasn't changed. I wonder about the viability of the business and whether or not we're doing this business owner a favor by allowing them to dig the hole deeper. But in any case, you know, if Mr. Grant was not aware that this was going to come before us tonight, I don't think that's an acceptable position. To put our staff in, and I think that that means, in my mind, we should ask for this information before we can make any kind of intelligent decision about what we're being asked to do. So, instead of you going and trying to find that information tonight, if that could be forwarded to the commission with perhaps staff's analysis of those numbers and what the last couple of years have looked like with this business. And I don't like making decisions without a reasonable amount of information available.
Understood. And I apologize, Ken. Our last conversation, we had discussed coming to the meeting and I apologize that I didn't follow up, but it was my understanding that you knew we would be here. So, I apologize for not following you.
Okay.
So, we meet again in two weeks. Commissioner?
May I ask, Ms. Osborne, just one question? You claim the lack of communication or not receiving the 2010 bill. Had you received that in a timely fashion? Were you prepared to pay it? Did you have the funds to pay it back then?
Yeah, last spring, we did have the funds to pay it.
And now, because of the penalties, it's too large?
Yes. And the fact that we had to replace our POS system, which is a point of sale, the computer system that runs the restaurant, that crashed on Labor Day weekend last year. So, it was not pretty, but yeah, we had some unexpected, large expenses that have caused us to be in this position to ask you for more time.
Even if allowed more time, my question is, what is your projection on how well business would be for this year?
That's a difficult question, being right on the beach. Our business is completely weather-driven. If we have a good summer, we will have a fabulous income. If we don't, and I can't predict the weather. I mean, we do everything that we can to run rainy day specials and, you know, keep people coming out, but people don't go to the beach if it's raining. So, you know, if we're granted good weather this summer, we will have the income to be able to do this. You know, obviously, we understand that this, you know, this is a difficult decision and difficult, you know, I mean, it's difficult for us too. But if we don't open, then it would be very difficult for us to even sell the business if it's not open. Because if somebody just drives by and looks at an empty building, it's not, you know, if we're granted more time to work on paying this back, you know, things are not working well. We would have to put it up for sale, but it would be much more sellable if it's open and they can see the operation and see what a great place that it is.
It'll be at least two weeks before we come back together as a body, if we go with, as proposed by Commissioner Spataro, with the additional information. I think we have quite a bit of information. There is history here of the past delinquencies and the like. So, we can either choose to do nothing and say good luck, or we can wait to make that determination in two weeks, which may be the same, choose to do nothing and say good luck. So, what's the desire of the body then? To gather, had the additional information gathered that has been presented by staff with perhaps a few more succinct numbers and then make the determination in two weeks? Commissioner?
I would also like to ask if they have a normal, good summer, will you make enough to pay off the amount in arrears?
If I could interject in there, I think we can do a lot of crystal balling.
Yeah, but I just want an answer to that.
Right, but, you know, there again, you know, it has kind of sort of been asked. I think we can ask that question over again. And we allow her to ask it, but, you know, we can beat that horse, you know, all night. You know, what do you see? What do you think? What do you not? And she has answered with, you know, depends on the weather, if we had this and that and everything else. And there's other bills there too, like Gordon Food Service and liquor bills and electric and so on and so forth. Can you tell us what occurred at the LCC hearing?
Oh, yes. It was, the license is held pending hearing from the commission, whether or not to activate it. It's already been paid, it's held there, but it is not a current active license at this time.
So, okay, so it'll be up to us to release?
This wouldn't be... You have a lot of events, volleyball events is your main one down there. You have to book those in advance, don't you? Do you have a lot of people coming in on weekends to have that? I think the Catamaran event happens down there and that brings traffic. Are you booking or you can't book and you're gonna be losing these events?
The volleyball is not our event.
Oh, it's not yours?
No. It's the MVP. And that's booked regardless. We, half the time, don't even know that they're coming. We pull in and, "Oh, okay, we're busy this weekend. We've got the volleyball down here." That one's not ours, but as you said, the Catamaran event, they use us as a home base. And that is already planned ahead. We generally have music, acoustic music on the deck every weekend. I've held off on booking that because I don't want to promise somebody a job that they can't have. We did do some interviews this weekend, but again, we have not promised anyone a job that we're not sure yet if we can provide for them.
Commissioners then will wait till the city commission meeting, two weeks hence, and have a more detailed breakdown of the history on this matter. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, commissioners.
Motion to adjourn, did we have one?
Not yet.
Is there anyone else who'd care to address the commission? Commissioner Hood?
In that case, I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.